And we are on muted, so we are fully online and Ann is on as well.
I haven't heard from Meredith, so I think originally she had said she wasn't going to make this meeting.
Yeah, you could be right, yeah. So I think we got Adam here, so we're in a full complement, Mr. Chairman, all seven people. Yep.
I think we should accept the August 16 minutes.
Motion being made. The motion has been seconded. Eric, motion is being seconded and further discussion?
This is Ann. I did not get a copy of that.
It was an email that came out.
And it's a text note?
She didn't get a copy.
Oh, that would explain it. I think I may have missed that meeting. So I would abstain.
Let me do the motion. Oh, is it fair, Ryan? Opposed? Abstentions?
I would abstain.
I will abstain.
Abstentions too? Motion, Karen? Next one I have on agenda is summary.
Just for the audience's benefit, Biochar requested a table. No, but it could be as early as next month, but I don't know yet. Just to let you know.
I have two as well. Next one I have on agenda for the evening is Kimmerhorn Residential Holdings. Do we have one of those?
Yeah, they are there, yeah. Give them one second.
Before we go into our last two together, again, a little geese were on long after they were resped, so we had to delay, you know, for that I have to apologize. I'll throw stones at them next time.
Yeah, that's all right. We'll do anything.
Probably not. Tell us a story.
So Travis, I'm sure we're doing around nine thirty-two or two. I wonder if Terry's in that moment. Kimmerhorn Residential Holdings.
Let's see. Travis, give them a moment. Jim, on our agenda, meeting agenda, I meant to address this earlier before we got started. Can we add to each of the agenda items, the name of the project and not just the applicant name?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because in the case of Kimmerhorn Residential Holdings, you could end up sometime having two of them on the same meeting, because they're two different projects. Thank you.
As you can see, we tried to make it more robust and we will continue to do so.
I'd like this one, I'll just let you know.
The tonight is called, what's Travis?
You can go ahead.
Very sorry.
There's this one here.
So Kimmerhorn Residential Holdings, this is a 23th parcel of, I can't see if you're out in yellow, there is something here. System reserve, that are here. I need your location, you are one of the district, that's district class, one of the, area on the 23rd site. I'm about seventy and a half meters. Twenty sixteen. That's just a close up of that parcel, this is in the whole, here. This was, I'll give you a bit of that. Also, Kimmerhorn to prove that, I've received it before, and it's back. Some of the areas in the other. That system reserve, south system. This is the site name, you saw this in concept, last one, three basic entrance off there, and you have rotated this, now this to the right. Two slots marked up. Four units building similar to what Kimmerhorn is constructed in. You know, the locations here nearby. Just need to look what it looks like on Google Earth. You can see that was taken property across the street, I think that's part of the core lands. Most of the stormwater flows, two large depression in the back here, because basically those soils are on the perimeter. To convey some larger back, a couple of smaller, smaller features up in front. And yeah, basic planting plan with some foundation plantings, plant around a dumpster, street trees and some spring trees on the high hedge or parrots and village. That's it, pretty simple. Questions, comments? I don't think, Jim, I don't think this has gone over, have you received the escrow?
Not to my knowledge, I have not.
That would be the standard twenty-one hundred.
Correct.
We'll get that, we'll get that.
Yeah, because we're at the very beginning of preliminary.
Travis, what do we do about getting home and testing, making the proper fire protection out there? And I'm not sure where the item is located there, is that close, should be within that eight hundred feet? You can say hundred feet still? Sure, yeah. Eight hundred, five hundred. Yeah, so if there isn't one, I don't have, I don't have the hard copy. I asked about that the last meeting. Somebody got hold of it, so before, before we get going, that should be done. What's he got, two days left? I think so, yeah. Yeah, that's why I asked the last meeting. I'm not sure if we're on. Yeah, I'll find out for sure. Okay. I think Joe probably presented it on the scene. He gets out of town. Yeah. Okay, so good, thank you. Can I mention today, obviously, it's nineteen minutes for water to sewer. Is that part of the sewer industry? I think it is. That's the end. What's the process to that now? Anybody know? Can I meet the end of the work?
The last I knew, they're no longer doing out of district users agreements to that effect, they prefer to do district extensions.
So we're gonna need, we're gonna need approval from the town board before we can move forward with this?
Yeah, well, if that's the case, we'd need a map planner report, if that is true.
Travis, what happened, this is, we run this off, right, this is the chicken and egg scenario, because there is no, unless we get some work with planning work, there is no need to extend a district, right, and not necessarily with sewer, but with water, as you know, if you extend the district, you commit to serve that property with water, and so you take some off of your supply. So what we'd try to do is at least get, and we can't issue final, but at least get down the process with the understanding that there will be district extensions. And if for some reason something falls apart, then it never gets final. I was thinking just looking for a plausible argument. That would make sense, and with that, then we can go down the road. Yeah, I know. Thank you, thanks, Travis.
Assuming that doesn't work out, I mean, basically, this project doesn't move forward without sewer.
No, it has to have sewer water.
In order to be, in order to, so that's right.
Do you want to do subject due in fact?
Uh, not for that, Nancy.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't think so.
Did you extend the size of that?
Yeah, I sort of pointed that out, so you can see this under, this under this, this is that previous private, you see that in the white line here, it does, doesn't quite fit on this scale, but you can see it under our, the sidewalk is extended across the property. So is that, is that gonna be your sidewalk, or their sidewalk, as you said? Or is that gonna be a town sidewalk? Who's gonna be responsible for the sidewalk?
I think it's a, we don't have a sidewalk district, that would be the property ownership responsibility. So that would be cleared as, like, the sidewalks internal to the site.
Yeah, if I recall correctly, on this one, it's just on the private property, that sidewalk is, but I'll take a look for sure. Because, you know, it's pretty close to the school, when we get into the, going to school there, and the first thing we're gonna hear in the town hall is that, up on the sidewalk. You know? Just put it in the sidewalk.
I'd like to connect with the sidewalk, even if it's gonna stop.
The sidewalk is still there, at least to extend it, you know. It's a ground. I mean, the sidewalk is great out there, I just wanted to know who's gonna maintain it.
So we're putting together a big chain.
Yes, yes, the kids aren't walking on the sidewalk, Harrison, Harrison is getting very busy.
That's, that's why I'm asking, who's, who's going to? I think you put a weight aside when it happens, just like you do. Okay, I'm getting the answer for you. So it already set up the same way, the same way the last one was, I don't remember the answer, because it's been five or six years ago, I do remember the discussion.
The last one was set up as Kimmerhorn was planning on maintaining. It was kind of a common theme anyways, so.
That's what I thought, I'm pretty sure it's just on random, probably, anyways, it's a responsibility.
Actually, we recorded that it was placed on a project, it is not, and don't prove it, that might not get to sewer extension, you know, the project, so I don't think you'll find much pushback. More, any other questions in the center?
Travis, between unit three and four, there's some type of a hammer out there, what is the is on the map, which by the way, I appreciate, I have a big, huge, full cable map.
So the emergency vehicle turner.
So we'll get the escrow fee in, find out about the sidewalk, um, which is, I don't, and hopefully see you next month with some review comments from LaBerge.
This is, I have a, I have a question, and that is whether or not you're going to undertake a traffic study here.
Looks good. Actually, it should. We have enough going on around here, and this, and two, it needs to take two traffic studies to do it out. We've recently improved subdivisions and everything else going on. We don't want to overload, and also, we don't want to overburden the applicant, I think it would be appropriate if we were adding, taking that out to a previous.
We'll just pull on tape one, but one of the prior, I mean, we've done several, I can't, we'll just go, we'll have them do a refresh of the sixteen units.
Okay, more in front. You want to respond to one, sorry.
All right, this is gonna be record time at seven fifty, we're gonna make a call by seven thirty. Move on people.
This will be October fourth for a planning working on October eighteenth.
Let's see, that would be October fourth for a planning working on October eighteenth. I think that's what we do with escrow, if we have anything to active from LaBerge, that we can, otherwise we'll probably skip along.
Okay.
I'll try and do an outline of some of your traffic, if you can, if you're safe. If you're allowed to review, or is this small enough?
That's up to the board. All right, so you want to send it off to your space, and that'll be a second escrow amount then? No, not on this one.
Jim, is this simple enough that you can just grab two and get an estimate, or you want to wait?
That's what I have been doing the last, last several times. Yes.
So this, this Harrison system development area is almost, it's almost like a game of, of, back on the track. Which is, I'm just, my point, I'm just waiting to see, the traffic study, and it goes, oh, this is the one. Where we actually got to see some kind of remediation. And I'm excited to be moved to the point where we have a stop wall development, but certainly, there's gonna be like a, we might need a traffic light somewhere.
I think you're gonna see that with hospitals.
I think, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I have no doubt. Okay. But I'm just waiting to see, in this case, these are roads that were never.
Well, it's all about the capacity, guys, that's why you don't, that's why you don't see it. It's the capacity, the intersections, and there is a fair amount there, I mean, I but if it's not, we'll find it. We'll find out.
We're, we're ready to go in some.
Yes, we are.
Like I said, it's just, I'm just waiting for it, it just seems like, and it's not, the funny thing is, it isn't necessarily gonna be a big project, it's just gonna be the one that happens.
Well, yeah, it's just incremental improvements, you have re-timing of signals, you have for installation or extensive turn lanes, you know, that kind of thing. Once in a while, you do see the purchase, outright purchase of a new signal, which I also think you could see every time Reynolds Road.
Yes.
Well, not cheap.
Everyone else, where the place, Travis? Any, uh, question?
We're all set, thank you.
Thank you. Next thing I have, really sweet thing is Baker's Falls Solar. Now, I assume we have one of those here?
You.
Get to it, okay. Before we get started, I'd like to catch up and have clean breaks. And with the previous review of this, as far as secret is concerned, we proposed and mailed on the conditional negative declaration. We have received of comments and lessons from near state parks of rec historic preservation. As you can see in our graphic, we have received that, and there being not well stirred with this or anything. So to that end, we have a motion to qualify and to move forward with a negative declaration. Seeing as how we have a conditional negative that based on comments from those folks, and now that we have received, it would be appropriate to declare a negative declaration, and then hold clean, clean, simple. I've talked too much.
That's good, thank you, that was the very first thing we were wanting to bring up. Are you sure that was clean? And Jim, when you prepare the negative declaration, it will, it will be clean, right, because we don't mention the conditional?
Yeah, we would amend, uh, part three to reflect that it's a clean negative declaration without condition, if the board approves.
Okay, well, that was one of my questions, Mr. Chairman. Do you, are you looking for just a straight negative declaration, or are you looking for a negative declaration in acknowledgement of the receipt of all the conditions that were placed.
We're looking for a negative declaration. And justification for that is, we have found everything to be in order for all of previously a conditional. Because all the conditions have been satisfied.
Yeah, the previous condition was satisfied, so therefore, we have a negative declaration.
I'd like to make a motion that we declare a negative declaration for the secret award Baker Falls Solar LLC.
Motion being made, is declare a negative declaration to their lighting assessment, they can move to Baker Falls LLC. So the motion, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Motion's been made, seconded, and further discussion? Oh, nothing. Seeing as how we can swept too hard with it, therefore, we're still rolling.
John Arnold?
Yes.
Eric Bergman?
Yes.
Ann Perdue?
Yes.
Mike Shaver?
Yes.
Gerald Bouchard?
Yes.
Peter Johnson?
I am.
Ann Siebel?
Yes.
I have a affirmative, not a negative, motion, Karen.
So the motion refers a negative declaration, no management conditions, which is exactly what we need, I just want to make sure that that's, I'll check with Jim to be sure that's.
If we did amend the previous, will we just correct?
Good, thank you, appreciate it.
We'll mess up something later.
That's a pretty much, Travis.
Thank you. Grabbing a new one. This is new part three, we can sell out.
Thank you. This is a current performance of Reggio. This is, uh, part two.
Well, it's a part three there as well, on the second page.
So, Mark?
Yes.
Yes. I'm confused. It doesn't take much. Has Baker Falls Solar been re-advertised for public care for this evening?
Yeah, I read this, I think it's closed.
Yeah, I thought it was closed.
We didn't, we dropped it on PAF, we have it open in the public care.
Yeah, I have it as open in my notes.
It's still open, we haven't looked.
Yeah.
So you don't have to re-post it, it's still open.
I see you corrected?
You always make my throat.
All right. Thank you, with our public care, we have the three basic grounds. First one being, anyone who has a comment or question that would ask the project, we're encouraged and invited to do so. Number two, finish your calls, anyone who does desire to make a comment, a statement or a name. If somebody said, a particular, the gentleman said, and we'll go forward. And our third, probably the most important, is through the whole process, we will maintain self-sensibility. On that, does anyone have a comment or question concerning Baker Falls LLC? And once more. It's not going for that. The question's valid, it's concerned.
We are still waiting on the, um, report from LaBerge on the status of the decommissioning agreement?
The meeting, sorry, but I think you did close it last time. This was meeting minutes show, like, what, eight minutes show, at eleven P M.
Okay, I just have, I just had my notes, it was open, I didn't make a notation about closing.
Okay. I don't like there's any comment anyway, but.
There was something that came about, a question about electric drive, is that resolved?
Um, what's proposed for that is, and, um, the applicant is proposing to use electric drive as a private driveway. What's in my mind, what's kind of unique about that is, electric drive is kind of the reverse of what we do. The electric drive already exists, it already exists as a public right of way. The applicant, I think, is proposing limited improvements on that, right, Travis, a gravel drive essentially? But it's, so we have a public right of way here, it's not an active town road, per se, it's not an improved town road, let me put it that way. And it receives no traffic, it's essentially exists today as a paper street, quote unquote. So now we have a first time proposed use of that right of way. I think that's, that's gonna require some acceptance from the town board in order to use town property in that fashion. And to improve it partially. And it's not gonna be a full road improvement, in other words. It's not gonna be full width of pavement, you know, and all the, the depth of gravel and all that, it'll, it'll be a limited improvement. For, which is a reasonable.
I think the paper street serves this.
So I, the reason why, I think it's important, we touched base there, is that although I think the limited improvement is fine, we don't want to do anything that would preclude from ultimate full improvement being made, you know, the pavement being put down and all that, so we don't want to do anything that would preclude that. I don't think they are, but I just think, we want, we want to make sure that the town board is accepting of the use of town property in this manner.
So the town actually owns the property that is electric drive?
Correct.
I'm asking this because I've.
Usually, we, we get the property donated to us, after it's been fully improved, and we accept the road as a.
Is that, I'm asking this because, I'm trying to understand this because I, my understanding of this industrial park has been developing as we go along. I thought the town owned the industrial park.
No, we do not, we don't do, we do not own the lots.
But the town owns on paper, electric drive.
Correct.
So that, when they did the subdivision of these lots, for the industrial park, they, they deeded away electric drive as a.
Correct.
So the.
That's my understanding.
So the applicant isn't asking for the town to complete the road that's supposed to be there for them to use, they're just asking to be able to improve it for their need.
As an, right, essentially as a private access, as I for now.
It's very nice that not the town would actually make it into the road it's supposed to be, to get to their particular site, right?
Yeah.
So we're, we think, we're gonna see it again, but we should be, in general, for the town board to talk to them about that subject, and also discussions on decommissioning plan, and, and pilot as well, so those are in front of town attorney.
Yeah, they may, they may feel generous, offer.
So you have.
Offer to put the road in.
Could you go over that again, you have three items for the town board tomorrow night, then?
Yeah, we, we, see you soon.
Use of the road, a decommissioning plan, and a pilot agreement.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, and it's been floated out there, I'm just waiting for confirmation.
Well, I'm sure you said your name before.
Sure, my name is Michael Cuciaro from Maxham.
So Jim, this might be a good time for me to throw this at you, I wonder if you could look into something.
Sure.
For us.
Yep.
When this was, when this particular industrial park was developed.
Yep.
And subdivided.
Yep.
Did they go through historic and endangered species on this?
They went through, they, they actually, because I am aware of this, because I represented an applicant once, I represented the chip, the, uh, the chip manufacturer there. Yeah, they did a, a full E I F on the park.
See, that's what I thought.
And they did a full subdivision, we have the sign plaque in the office, so.
So then I guess my question is, is that, are we basically asking for an updated historic?
So we ask.
Review and an updated endangered species, because really, it's already been done on it, right, and it's subdivided?
We asked that very question, so when we, when we first brought this in, we, we provided a, a prior study, and they still wanted it, they still wanted.
So they think that maybe since that study was done, something historical has happened?
I don't, I don't know exactly what was, what, what type of fieldwork was done in the original study, can you give me that, that, that it wasn't, you know, as detailed as it could have been now?
So I guess I concede with endangered species, you know, maybe the Indian brown bat decided to move in after they checked it, but nothing historical is going to occur after they did it thirty years ago.
Well, there, there, there is
Yeah.
There is a process allowed in secret where you can have what they call a generic environmental impact statement.
Right, right.
That, that provides a, like a blanket assessment of the entire site, and it sets thresholds, and as long as subsequent projects don't cross those thresholds, there's no need to go through the assessment.
That's why I ask, because I remember when this was originally developed, I swear, I remember that they went through and did this.
Oh, they did.
That it was, it was building.
The documents are like that thick.
But then again, things change.
Yes.
All right, so I didn't know, maybe there was a timeline, and that's why we're asking for a. All right, so I didn't know maybe there was a timeline and that's why we're asking for updated or if we just didn't remember that this.
Well, yeah, it it it's rare to see things like the archaeology updated because the point's well taken, obviously. But you know, things like traffic obviously can change and and things like that.
And I think there's even room to argue that the species should be.
Yes, they can shift. Wetlands can shift.
Dangerous species are very good at not necessarily staying where they belong.
Yep.
So or where they've been, but all right.
I mean, I I I think we did take a good precautionary measure in that the assessment was done to this particular proposed use on this site.
Yeah, that's that we specifically asked ship of, you know, it's already been done. Yes.
Okay, all right, well, thank you for clearing that up. We appreciate it.
The draft in the first step was completed.
Yes.
Yes.
There was a finding statement done, the whole thing.
Jim, did LaBerge ever respond to the last comments on the SWIP?
No, not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, and by the by the way, I was at the August sixteenth meeting. So I guess I just didn't get a copy of the minutes, but it was at that meeting we asked about um, LaBerge's response to the SWIP comments.
Yeah, Jim, if you look, there's a sign on from LaBerge on the SWIP.
Okay. All right, let me I'll I'll clarify that and let me look in the file here.
Okay, and the other thing is I I would assume LaBerge is looking at the revised decommissioning plan.
That's correct.
Okay, and we would be getting comments back from that at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I I do have right here in front of me, June eleventh, LaBerge essentially signed off on the the SWIP. There's just a couple. Yeah, they did.
June eleventh?
Yep, June eleventh.
Okay, great.
I just have a couple of comments on the decommissioning plan. From you submitted. I see that you had you had replied with the decommissioning plan that you wrote the document. And then you repeated it in some you added some notes. The only part I have is one, two, three, and four, and five. It includes the word should. Things should be done. And I view that as being, well, that's like, you know, recommendation. Let me go shout those, you know, because I believe that's your intention. Shall we done?
You're talking about on the actual plan.
On the drawing, you have those five notes.
Yep.
Um, and then there is just one typo with note three with the one, two, three, four, five, six line. And you put the word used, that should be used, which is what it says in your notes. While you're there, thank you.
And I think I know, waiting on the first word for the planning board, we definitely, I think we responded to to every comment noted. So both in that and the drawings.
Yeah, so the only outstanding item with them is the decommissioning plan. That's correct. And I gave you the wrong part three. I owe you part three for a long form. I'll go get it.
We'll get it, Mr. Chairman.
The um, the decommissioning plan, we gotta go before the town board.
Right, right.
Is there is there a chance that this board passes it on to the town board at this point? I'm saying, can you can you issue a site plan approval without waiting for the parish to respond back on that decommissioning plan?
No, that would be inappropriate.
I I think you decided at a prior meeting, you wanted to wait and see the full decommissioning plan resolve.
Mr. Mitch, is there a question?
Decommissioning plan, that's that's the last last step. Jim, you said you would you would ask them about it. I was.
No.
Can we also have to have the use of the right of way clarified?
Well, they're supposed to that's on their list tomorrow night with the town board.
Okay, but that will that clarification will come back to us in some communication.
Uh, I hope so.
Okay.
It's Ann's point. Did you hear back from National Grid as far as the right of way under their?
Application or the the application or study on that right of way is is in progress. And I think what I might draw up there too is kind of a conditional approval perhaps on decommissioning. After, you know, we we couldn't start this project anyway with without that crossing right of way with National Grid. And approval of, you know, the East End of the town. I mean, all three of those things we would need, or I should say two or three things we physically need to start. But um, that could be a way to town my project.
So I might I might add this. If the answer to that is not, the good thing is is you're in our second meeting. So you're already a week into the next cycle. So if we move forward from now and you go tomorrow night in front of the town board, LaBerge comes back, what uh, next week, you can certainly make it onto the October meeting in two weeks.
Yep.
So it is a whole lot of this, I guess, is my point. I know it's frustratingly slow, but at least it's only two.
Well, and in in fairness to the town, this is our first solar project that that is advanced to a decommissioning plan. And that is a that's another chicken and egg question on that one too.
And it's nice, it's moved along relatively smoothly because it's it's a really nice plan and a reasonably easy location. You know, I mean, it's so it's just a matter of working through this. I look forward to seeing the decommissioning plan and then tell you it's a planning board member. I've never seen one before. You probably, I've never seen, I've never even seen like a big area, so.
Should should be in your part, in your package, over before.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, yeah, no, I I I hear that as you first time I go through with solar project and I stand that I I would suggest that for the right of way though. Um, except that to extend, we expect that to probably extend a few more months.
Yeah, I'm okay with the National Grid um, access right of way being uh, or or user rights to be a conditional. I'm pretty sure you're not gonna build solar panels where you can't get to.
No.
And not go. What's up?
Helicopter access.
And I'm afraid.
Didn't stop the fire department. What do you want formally? The formal, the public hearing was closed then. Okay.
Just in case, we're gonna go on the next year. So we're very close.
Thank you.
Same here. We've got a reading that's.
Okay.
Yeah, just in case.
Gordon, in front.
I don't think we're.
Well, I think, yeah, it sounds like you're gonna get um, some, you know, progress tomorrow night with the town board.
So I did notice on the website, I was checking through the agenda, it says town, the site might be hacked. So I don't know if the town, I'm serious. When I looked at it, it wasn't marked instead of on Google research for it. I swear, I was looking through the agenda before in hand just to see if we got it put up, but um, sorry.
This is today, uh, who was Thursday, twenty twenty two.
Well, Peter, do you want another part three or are you okay with that? Yes.
I do.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Communication with you, I'll let you know about it.
Okay.
It's gotta be a question.
No, not yet. We have a motion for adjournment? No, I do not.
I'll take a motion to.
Good night, Ann.
Hi.